Testing, one, two, three. This will be the February 18th, 2015 City Council Regular Meeting.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order a regular City Council meeting in the city of Satellite Beach, February 18th, 2015, approximately 7:00 PM. Will you please join me in a moment of silence and a pledge? And a pledge. Pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, ununderdogged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for This time I'll open up for citizens' comments on non-agenda items. The floor is open.
Good evening. My name is Mark Abraham. I'm a resident of Satellite Beach. For those who would like to contact me, my email is markabraham@hotmail.com. I would like to ask the board to delay any decisions that might be forthcoming within the next year or so on entering into any more grants concerning the Resilient Community Program. And the reason I say that is because the information has changed so drastically in the five years since the report that you've based your decisions on. I'm going to enter these into the record. There is a scientist, NASA scientist, climatologist, his name is Roy Spencer, PhD. The name of his latest paper is "95% of Climate Models Agree the Observations Must Be Wrong." What he points out is what you've probably heard of in the last two weeks, which is that of all the climate models, none of them that have been used for their studies, whether it be those that are used by the Resilient Program, the Sustainability Program, Agenda 21, which are all in lockstep with one another, none of them have come true. In fact, they're so far off that the scientists are scratching their heads, "Oh, my gosh, how do we get it that wrong?" And I'm sure if you're up to date with what's there, you'd know that was happening. In addition to that, there were 15 scientists, of which one of them is a scientist I follow quite a bit, his name is Don, Dr. Don Easterbrook. He has testified before the Senate multiple times. You can find him on YouTube videos where he discusses the issues of climate change, global warming, and he sets the record straight. They came out with a scathing report against, the title of it is "Scientists Respond to the Obama Administration's National Climate Assessment 2014," and the bottom line is it is not true. In other words, there's fake junk science that's being used. In addition to that, I'd like to put forth a report that came out December 10th, 2014. It's called "The Global Climate Status Report." It's put out by the Space and Science Research Corporation out of Orlando, Florida. And of all nights, this might be the appropriate night to at least recap this. It says here that "Overall climate status, the Earth is presently in a sustained phase of global cooling through moderated but recently past peak of solar heating during a solar cycle number 24. Though there is new evidence of a reduction of this rate during the 2013-2014 period, the rate of temperature decline on a hundred-year trend line is the steepest seen during that timeframe going back to 1914. We conclude that the past period of global warming as a natural phase of climate variation caused by the Sun has ended, and a new cold period epic has begun." And they state why that's true and declare that over the next 40 years, we're going to be entering a cold spell and a drop of approximately five degrees on average. In addition to that, I would ask you this. Your folks predicted a two-foot rise of the river and the sea level by 2050, and that prediction was made in 2010. You've gone five years. So 2010 to 2015 is five years. The question is, have you, in that time period, has the river level risen as much as what the study says it's going to? And the answer is no. And I would suggest you do your homework on that and understand also, your report said that you had until 2015 before really making any decisions. I think you ought to open the floor back up to people and workshops so that both sides can weigh out the issues to determine whether we're really rightfully spending resources running down this road. Because remember, grant money doesn't come for free. It doesn't fall off a tree. We've got to support at least 50% of that in most cases. So I'd like you to stop in deadening the city and understand that running down the road of resiliency isn't going to give you anything that you can't get out of building codes and proper insurance. Thank you. These are for the --
Please. Floor still open for public comment. Hear none, closed public comment. Come back to City Council comments. Who would like to start?
I have nothing.
Just like to say again to the city staff, these community meetings that we've been doing, I think they have gone very well. I think Dominic was the one that had the idea to do this, but this has been going very well. The feedback I've gotten has been very positive, so just thank you for you guys putting this together. It's really been enjoyable to go and get some of the questions out there that we have out there, so thank you. The other thing is, is that tomorrow at 12:30, we have a CFAL Communities for a Lifetime presentation at the REC Center. It's open to everyone. It's on fitness with aging, so if you're interested in attending that, it'll last for about 20 to 30 minutes.
What time?
12:30. It's the first one we've rolled out in Brevard County, and it's kind of the test model, so we're testing it here in Satellite Beach, like we have a lot of this stuff. So we want to see how that works and get some feedback on the people that attend. So I don't know what the attendance is going to be, but we'll see where we go from there. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
I've been pretty busy. On the 6th, I met with Dina Ryder Hicks and several of the waste management supervisors at their facility off of Wickham Road, and they are aware of some of the issues that we've been having in the city as far as yard waste pickup, and they ran me through the scenarios they're using to correct the situation. We now have Ryan, who is the new person who is designated as Satellite Beach's representative, and hopefully some of these issues are going to go away. But the technology that they're using with their trucks, they can tell where the truck has been, whether things got picked up. I mean, it is pretty amazing when you look at what they have, so I was pretty impressed with that. On the 9th, I went to the Space Coast League of Cities Rockledge Monthly Meeting, and the president of the Florida League of Cities, Lori Mosley, was the guest speaker that night. And that one, pretty interesting. Let's see. I attended the same meeting that Mark attended at the United Methodist Church, and that was really, I mean, you know, we're getting a good turnout at these meetings that we weren't getting in city facilities, and that makes a huge difference in, I think, getting the people out. I had a conversation with Lori Scott, who is the supervisor of elections. She's looking at the 2016 presidential race, and she's looking for a beachside early voting facility and was hoping that Satellite Beach could accommodate doing that. There's three different time slots that they have early voting, and I've given those dates to Courtney and to Carrie, and hopefully staff can come up with something. From what Lori told me, is they've used the Melbourne Beach area, but they're not having good luck because most of the voters are voting from Satellite Beach, and they're not going down to Melbourne Beach to vote. She would rather have, you know, early voting here if it's at all possible, so staff is, I guess, working on that. On the 14th, I went to the keep Brevard beautiful Ethan Shoda and his mom Kathy, who run the cleanup at Pelican Beach Park, and it was cold Saturday morning, but they still had a pretty good turnout and picked up a bunch of trash. And the last thing I have, I know at some point in time in the past, and we talked about invasive exotic trees that are out there, and the city looked at this, and we didn't really go any farther on this until we pretty much cleaned up our own act. And I think our act has been cleaned up, and John Baker, who's been a longtime city volunteer, has been cutting down Brazilian pepper trees from the Pioneer Causeway to the O'Gale Causeway. And, you know, I go by the post office about three times a week, and to the north of the post office is the retention pond, and that retention pond is inundated with Brazilian pepper trees. And I spoke with John Stone about it, and I guess we, as a council, need to look back to when we originally had this discussion that we weren't going to really move forward with any of this until, you know, we came up with how we were going to do it. And, you know, for all of the work that John Baker has done, we have all of these seeds that are on these trees that are right there at the post office, and all they're doing is providing new growth for Brazilian pepper trees. So I would ask that we kind of go back and look at whatever we need to do to correct the situation going forward, so, you know, we have some teeth to be able to go in there and say, "Please clean these out." That's all I have. Thank you.
I attended the -- Katina, can you hear me when I talk? Am I speaking loud enough? Okay. I attended the South Beaches Coalition Meeting, and we were able to support Indy Atlantic's request to the TPO to put a crosswalk across A1A near the park, if I get the name of that park down there.
Yes.
Near 192.
It's Nance Park.
Okay. And they have a lot of pedestrian traffic there, and there was no crosswalk, so we supported requesting that. I enjoyed the second town hall meeting because I could hear. What a concept. And the Beachcaster on the infrastructure will be going to the printer on Friday. Because we are at the end of a month, during which time we would be preparing a Beachcaster for the March-April edition, this one is going to be that March-April edition. The first six pages of it will be on the infrastructure proposal, and that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. I also attended Space Coast League of City in Rockledge and the town hall meetings, which, again, too, I believe are going extremely well. Also had a pretty interesting meeting. Courtney and I met with Patrick Air Force Base, and also attending that meeting was a potential customer, I guess, on the 110 acres. And we learned a lot from the meeting. I think we have a little bit of ways to go there, but we are making some progress. We're meeting, finding out, you know, a few new things that we weren't aware of, but all in all, I think we're going in the right direction there. Also, we talked to them about the P4 Initiative, which is a public and private venture with the base, and we're working on some recreation fields on that, which also during that meeting, that portion went well, too. So that, those items are in progress, and that's all I have to say. Moving on to City Manager's Report. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. On March 1st, the Lions Club will be holding their fourth annual car show at the DRS Center from 9:00 until 4:00 PM. So if you're interested in putting your car in that show, you can call the Schecter Center and get that number, or you can look up my report on our web and get that number as I am in discussions with Stetson University, the University of Florida, and Florida Institute of Technology, and Florida Sea Grant regarding the possibility of submitting another grant to begin the engineering and geographical information systems data collection on our infrastructure to begin assessing our city for the practical application of the data collected in our current project for community resiliency. So right now, we're getting people's opinions. The next phase would be assessing our infrastructure and coming up with a plan for the future, incorporating the context or the data from the resiliency project. So I've included that letter of intent in your packet. If the letter of intent is accepted and they ask us to submit a grant, then I will come back to you with that grant authorization, and you'll hear a presentation from the, what they call the principal investigators for the grant, which would be representatives from all the universities, and we'll talk about what that grant would do for the city. They're excited about the city because it's such, we're such a small city that it's a manageable level of infrastructure that they can look at. The community meetings are going well, and we will be conducting the third meeting for the area between Roosevelt Avenue and Cassia Boulevard on February 26th, that's a Thursday, at Oceanside Community Church at 7:00 PM. The notices have been sent out, so I'm already getting emails and questions, so that's good. We have sent out the notes and the minutes from the past two meetings already to those participants of those meetings, that requested the minutes and gave us their email addresses. I did want to let you know that the fire department has reorganized their operations with the resignation of Paula Brant, which was, who was their administrative assistant and very long-term employer at the city. It was devastating to see her go, but also an opportunity for them to reorganize and create a community paramedic position that's also combined with administrative functions. So that position is consistent with the city's community for a lifetime, and we've got nine people on the program so far, and so we'll be advertising those. Ask the chief to talk about that during the community meetings to see if there's anyone interested in being part of that program. The Florida League of Cities Action Days will be held, and this is action items, by the way, will be held at the Doubletree by Hilton in Tallahassee on March 17th through the 18th, and you'll see the attachment in my packet, and I believe Vice Mayor Montanaro would like to be attending that, so that we would need an action from council to allow that to go through.
Senator.
I have a motion by Councilman Godd, second by Councilman Breimer. Discussion from council. At this time, opened up for public comment on the action item to attend the Florida League of Cities Action Day. Hear none. Bring it back to council. Any further discussion?
Councilman Osmer, are you interested? Is this something --
I have other commitments this time.
You know, I've mentioned this to you, that this was going to be happening, and these are, this is going to be different next year because the legislative session next year starts earlier.
Right.
So it's going to be a different timeframe, and you may be able to accommodate that into your schedule next year, but this is, it's a good opportunity to see what happens in Tallahassee and to go see our legislators up there on the issues that are going to affect our city as these bills come up.
And when you see what happens in Tallahassee, don't repeat it.
Actually, I do get to see this from another perspective when they have the space one up there. All the space contractors and companies also go to Tallahassee to visit with their legislators and talk about things that impact space program and port and stuff like that around here, which is another thing that I've participated in before also. So I am a little familiar with going to Tallahassee and meeting with those folks.
Any further comment? Hear none. Lenore?
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Godd?
Yes.
Mayor Katina?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Courtney?
I have two more action items and one more item. I'm sorry, that came up in between the publication of Agenda and today. I copied a letter for you and an email from Brevard, well, from us, to Brevard County, and an email back, which, in the letter, we were formally requesting the use of impact fees for the Roosevelt Project, which was, we were notified that there is a possibility of, well, there was a possible, I guess, $450,000 that were in the impact fee reserves that could be spent, and that, so we formally requested $360,000 of that for the Roosevelt Project. We also knew that they would have to reconvene the Transportation Impact Fee Committee. In the county, the moratorium on transportation impact fees has been so long that this committee hasn't met, and I used to sit on that committee, but, so we, so they have to reconvene that committee to get, to review the use of the funds. So Satellite Beach has always had a position on that committee. We've just never appointed one, so I'm recommending that you appoint me to that committee, especially in the short term, so we can argue for the use of those funds.
So moved. Second?
I have a motion by Councilman Breimer, second by Vice Mayor Montanaro. Discussion from council? Hear none. Opened up for public comment? Hear none. Back to council. Any further --
Steve, would you turn that microphone toward Lenore, please? Thank you.
Any further comment? Hear none. Lenore?
Councilman Godd?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Katina?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Courtney?
Thank you. And the second item is that we did receive a, what they call scoping letter, from the Army Corps of Engineers, discussing the mid-reach project. I've put that on your desk or on your, on the dais for each of you, and this basically talks about some of the items that they're considering for that project, including the use of quarried sand. And I've invited Mike McGary from the county, Brevard County, to come and answer questions and kind of give an overview of what this letter means and what that would entail. So I'd like for him to come up, if you don't mind, and kind of give us an idea of what exactly this means.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for this opportunity to try to clarify some background on that Corps of Engineers letter. The original project as scoped in the environmental impact statement prepared by the Corps of Engineers is to use offshore sand from Canaveral Shoals, which is the material we've used in Indy Atlantic, in the Cocoa Beach area, in the federal projects. That sand would be stockpiled at Port Canaveral in a dredge material management area before transporting it to the beach by truck. I'm sure you'll all recall that the necessity to bring it on by truck was so that it could be a very narrow beach and minimize impact to the nearshore rock, and that the resource has value, so there's, they've taken great steps to minimize that impact. In moving forward toward construction and the core planning folks, to put material at the port in the dredge material management area is still the preferred route, but as scoped, the project, in order to do that, they would have to wait for a dredge to be under contract to build either the South Reach Project in Indy Atlantic or the North Reach Project in Cocoa Beach. That's because mobilizing that dredge equipment is extremely expensive, and in their cost-benefit analysis, they presumed it would be optimal, and we all agree it would, that while the dredge is here and you've paid to get it to town, you build the beach in Indy Atlantic or wherever and put sand at Port Canaveral for the mid-reach. The complication was that is if they don't plan to bring a dredge back to town for the South Reach until 2020, and they may be ready to build the mid-reach project as soon as 2017, for the sake of discussion. And if the weather is cooperative, we may not be desperate for the project by then, but if we are, they didn't want to be in a spot where they said, "There's nothing we can do. We have to wait until the dredge is coming in 2020." So that was one reason for them seeking an alternate. It's not entirely a new path. They just want to have a second option. Secondly, the Air Force owns the dredge material management area at Port Canaveral, and they, the Corps uses it for Navy dredge boils, and the Corps has been negotiating use of that site. But whenever you agree to use a military site, it is known that any military need takes precedent, and it's next to the nuclear sub basin up there. So while we fully expect to have the authority to use that, obtained in 10-year increments from the Navy, staff at the Corps of Engineers says, "Well, what if, what if the Navy changes their mind?" So again, they didn't want to have all their eggs in that, only that basket. So that's another reason for seeking the quarried sand. Now, this past year, when we built an Upland Dune Project, there was some public discontent with the sand. I'm aware of that. I've worked with members of Surf Rider. That project was built under a different sort of state permit. It was a coastal construction control line permit for high on the beach, and the sand specifications recommended by the state for that project were different from the specifications that are in the mid-reach federal project permit, which allows the sand to go straight into the water and, in fact, widen the beach, push sand out into the water. So the sand specifications, if they use quarried sand, would be significantly tighter than what were used in the most recent Dune Project. Also, I've, I mean, on the Dune Project, that project, the sand was within the permit limits, provided to us and approved with help from the state, but it was finer than what I would consider optimal. After the fact, I've spoken with members of Surf Rider and others and said, even if the county built with the help of the state another emergency dune project, I will change those sand specifications to make sure it's a, it's a more suitable sand, because even though we met the environmental requirements in our permit, I wasn't entirely pleased with it, and we heard the public discontent. But for the federal project, the sand specifications for the quarried sand will be just as tight as the off, as when they use offshore sand, and the, the sand quality will not suffer if they use quarried sand. It just provides them a secondary option, so they're not stuck in a spot where they're just not able to build the project when the beach needs it.
Just, what, questions? Are questions from council?
No.
I have a couple.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Naturally, we would get the offshore sand. I mean, if Port Canaveral wasn't there and there wasn't the channel dug, the natural drift of the sand is to the south, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So what I've seen is the quarried sand is an average of. Is that a correct statement? A fine and large grain, it's got to meet a percent over the whole project or each load?
Each load. Any given sample has to pass the specifications. So you can't have one load of extremely fine and one load of extremely coarse, and overall, I mean, it's any given load, any given bucket full of sand you scoop up on the beach has to meet the specifications, but the --
I just have seen what the surf looks like, how much turbidity after one of those projects with sand that comes from quarried sand. I've seen it down in Stewart, and I've even seen it here. So I'm worried about that process when you have the natural sand, excuse me, that comes down the beach, that obviously falls into a hole right now, being the channel, and, you know, if it was put on the other side of the channel, it would naturally drift and be the right sand. Is that a correct --
Well, that, that is true, but I want to make clear that while 30 to 40 years ago, the inlet at Port Canaveral sand was not appropriately managed at the mouth of that inlet. The Army Corps of Engineers had not gotten their plan together, but Port Canaveral led the charge on the order of 15 to 20 years ago. They were the first inlet in the state to have a proper inlet management plan which bypasses sand around the port. So currently, every five years, plus or minus, they go to the north side of the port and harvest sand from right up in the surf zone, as close to the beach as they can get, and pump it to the south side of the harbor. So for the last 15 years, they have been bypassing the appropriate amount of sand, like you said, if the, so that is happening now. In addition, the North Reach Project, which is from the harbor 10 miles south to Patrick Air Force Base, the Beach Nourishment Project, which used sand from Canaveral Shoals, was an enormous dose of sand in an effort to catch up for the historical loss from poor management of Port Canaveral in the 50s and 60s, for example. But it's going to take a long time for that sand to get this far south if that's the only, if that's the only alternative is to wait and -- only, if that's the only alternative is to wait, and so the inlet is not the current problem, I guess, is my answer on that.
Being the channel there, there was transfer stations south at Boynton Beach Inlet that pumped sand from the Corps south for years, but they never put a transfer station in here, correct? There isn't a transfer station, it's only done by a man whenever they have the funding to do it, correct?
That's correct, but it is done in adequate doses. A study was done in a fixed transfer station, like at the smaller inlet you mentioned, they determined it's not as practical nor cost-effective, because the sand north of the Cape, it's accumulating on a large stretch of shoreline between the Cape and the harbor, whereas in a smaller inlet on a straighter shoreline in southeast Florida, it tends to all pile up right next to the jetty, and they can harvest, and it's also a smaller amount of sand each year there. So it is not a fixed transfer station, but every five years, they track how much sand is moved, and they move the appropriate quantity, it's just done in large doses every five years, as opposed to it with a trickle.
Thank you.
I think I understand kind of where Frank is coming from, Mike. I mean, if we could have our druthers, we would rather have the pumped sand, because when it's pumped in, it's pretty much clean sand. The stuff that is dug basically has a film on it. I mean, when it goes in the water, the film comes off. The stuff that comes up when they pump it up off the shoals is pretty much clean, there isn't anything on it. So the water does get more turbid, I mean, I understand.
Yeah, and I hear that, and I would not say that's entirely incorrect, but that's why, at the quarries, they can wash sand as much as you will pay them to do it. And we've looked, Indian River County did an upland project where they put the sand in the water, and I went and I looked at that, and I talked to the quarries processing it, and while it cost more than Indian River County initially anticipated, the cost for the washing was tolerable, and we, the county as the local sponsor, I give you my word, I don't want the same sand, the same upland sand we've built the dunes with, to be used to build the proper beach, but the washing is possible at the quarries if you mandate it.
Well, I think that would be our concern, is that we would want it to be as close to what would be pumped out. And I understand the rationalization that they're proposing here, we want to make sure that we can do what we need to do, when we need to do it, but I think at the same time, you know, whatever we can do to mitigate the sand coming in somewhat tainted, I think that's our concern.
Mine is, you know, I want the natural, I mean, I'm pretty adamant there, but my last resort would be the other sand, just because I've seen projects in the past that, you know, and I think you would also agree, if we had a perfect world, we'd never take the sand from the inland quarries, I mean, over.
Yes, and when, yes, when this project concept was born with the Army Corps more years ago than I want to acknowledge, they asked, and we said, "We have to, you know, we, Canaveral Shoals sand is beautiful sand, it's, we like it, it's clean," I don't argue with that. If the council, you know, would like to take a position in whatever manner, but I just, I might suggest that you stress preference and not absolute ban, or it may, it may come back to be problematic in the future. But certainly mandating it's adequate, if it's upland sand, it be adequately washed to avoid any turbidity problems, and that your first preference is offshore sand, I would, we would both agree on, well, I would agree to that statement, that's how I would phrase it, but I certainly respect your concerns, and leave it in the hands of council for how you'd like to proceed.
I wanted to, because you told me something before the meeting, that, I don't know if it came out clearly, but it's almost impossible to pump sand, because the pumping piece of it would, wouldn't it, this is something, maybe I'm wrong, but I heard that it would affect the actual reef, and that's the part you're trying to avoid?
Well, we, Brevard County, we've been seeking multiple options. The common belief is it's not practical to pump the sand directly onto the beach, and that's what I told you, because to pump it directly onto the beach, too much of it will probably escape and go into the water more on the rocks than any of us would desire. As an experiment in Cocoa Beach last year, when the dredge was here, we did have them do an experiment to determine if it might, by dykes, if they can control the sand, and in learning that, we learned actually they can control the sand, but it's risky, and it would actually be more, quite a bit of public disturbance, if you can believe it could be worse than trucks, it might be. So I would say the odds are the sand has to be applied to the beach with trucks, but it doesn't mean it can't be harvested from Canaveral Shoals, pumped with water to the port, where it would receive that washing before it's brought here by sand.
So that's something that the council could send comments in for? Is that something they can do?
Absolutely.
So I think if you want us to crack that, we would be glad to, if you have consensus to do that.
Also, because it's an action item, I want to open it up for public comment.
I just had one more question before he leaves.
Certainly.
A lot of the, a lot of the questions I get from the surfing community is the mitigation piece of the project, is that going to affect the surf breaks itself? You know, is that going to affect the hydrology of the water, and how it affects, basically their lifestyle? Is that going to happen?
Yeah, and I think in, as part of the state permitting process, engineering models and work had to be done to assure the mitigation reef did not trip the waves up enough, any coastal structure, you have to make sure that it doesn't influence the shoreline. The reefs will be in approximately 15 feet of water, and these are mitigation reefs built specifically to mitigate, replace the nearshore rock that is buried, and they'll be very low-lying to match the low-lying rock near the shore. So they'll only be on the order of two feet high and 15 feet of water, and the state coastal engineering group, as well as our coastal engineers, believe they'll be outside the reach of the surface, so they shouldn't have an effect on the shoreline.
Are those reef balls that you're going to put there? Is that the ones at FIT, those?
No.
Okay.
They're not reef balls, they're a custom-designed structure to more closely mitigate the slab Koquina reefs that are there.
Given the beach where it's at now, how much it has received, and if the port wasn't there, the area that you're going to fill to make the beach wider would naturally have been filled 30 years ago? Because 30 years ago, the beach was much wider than it is today, 40 years ago. Those rocks were covered naturally by that sand 40 years ago. Are we going beyond that, or are we going up to?
Approximately the same, and overall, the mid-reach shoreline, the mean-high waterline has been retreating on the order of six inches per year for the last 40 years. Now, it doesn't happen every year, it's stable for a few, and then you lose six or 10 feet all at once. So if you use that, that six inches a year, and you pick 30 years, that would be okay in the last 30 years, the mean-high waterline has retreated on the order of 15 feet. The Army Corps project is proposing to advance the mean-high waterline 10 feet seaward in some areas, which is the bulk of your city, and 20 feet seaward, basically, mostly in Indian Harbor Beach, they balanced it based on the risk of structures and so on, but the waterline's going to be advanced on the order of 10 to 20 foot seaward, and with the six-inch-per-year number, over 30 years, you've lost approximately 15 feet. So it's similar to, as it would have been 30 to 40 years ago.
Is that your baseline? 30 years, what's the baseline?
No, you picked 30, and that's just, it's just the number I use. The environmental agencies actually, it is irrelevant if the rock was buried five years ago, if it's exposed when you build the project and you bury it, you're obligated to replace that habitat. So that's been an argument over the years. Well, 100 years ago, all the rock was buried. Well, that, what was in the past as far as rock exposure doesn't matter, so the design of the Corps was to build the minimal beach necessary to provide some meaningful upland protection and minimize the impact to the rock. And 10% rock impact was sort of a target that the team set out early in the process, and that's sort of where it worked, that if we could keep our impact to less than 10% of the habitat, we believed it would be tolerable to the environmental agencies, and that proved true in the end.
Thank you.
There's one other, you're getting ready to start tilling, is that something you can update and run?
Yes, so for all our beach projects, both the ones built by the dredge and the ones built by trucks, in the abundance of caution, the environmental permit says for three years after the project, you should till the beach material to assure it remains loose, and perhaps in an effort to mix it in with the underlying sand as appropriate. So that includes the South Reach in Indian Atlantic, the dredge project, as well as the mid-reach, and then up in Cocoa Beach as well. So the contractor's going to start on that tomorrow in Melbourne Beach and work northward. I did some quick, back-of-the-envelope calculations, and it's just tilling the new sand, which is between the sea oats and the escarpment, which for the, it's only on the order of 15, 20 feet wide. So for any given quarter-mile of beach, they'll be there about an hour, so the disturbance will be very short-term, and the contractor's required to have a person, in addition to the guy driving the tractor, someone to walk ahead and talk to people and say, "Excuse me." So it will get attention, because people will wonder what's a tractor doing on the beach, but it's a requirement of the environmental permits, and the disturbance in any one area should be quite brief.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm done.
At this time, since this is an action item, a new action item, I'll open it up for public comment.
Hi, Mark Abraham, resident of Satellite Beach. What's the depth of the till?
Sir, direct the question here.
What's the depth of the till?
Please.
36 inches is the depth specified by our environmental permits.
Okay. Since you know, I came down here to Florida in the early 70s, approximately '72, '73, and I'd like to share with you what I knew the beach was, and what the beach sand was during that time. It was primarily Koquina shell, and what was interesting was, is that the beaches were much wider, none of the structure that's trying to be preserved today, the reef that everyone trips on and breaks their ankles on today in Satellite Beach, that didn't exist 40 years ago. You walked right out across sand. In addition to that, I show people pictures of my surfing pictures, where we have what's known as a triple break. And what that means is that the waves are coming in, and there's a big break on the outside, it regains, it breaks again in the middle, and it comes in with crushing shore break. That's what used to be here, from Canaveral all the way to Sebastian. It doesn't exist today. I know that during the 80s, the Army Corps of Engineers came in, and supposedly they, I was told, they used a clay loam in with the sand mix. And I remember one day I dove into what I thought was a soft sand dune, and I broke three ribs and tore off a chunk of skin that I wouldn't even want to venture to say how much blood loss I had. And the reason for it is that what I thought was soft sand, because I was diving to catch a frisbee, turned out to be this hard-packed clay with the sand mixed in with it, okay? It was like a rock. Now, the problem with sandy loam and finer grain is that you don't get sandbars. The triple break I was telling you about came about because we had crunchy, coarse Koquina sand. When the waves would hit, it would actually burst the sand up into the air, you could look down through the water, and you could see the big chunks of Koquina fall into the ground, and it would establish a ditch and a sandbar. So what happens is, as the tide comes in, the waves break differently, the sandbars move back and forth. We don't have that anymore. What we had 40 years ago does not exist today, and what you're bringing in today does not match what we had naturally before they did all that. And so I'm just pointing that out, because I'm really surprised that Army Corps of Engineers, other people come in, and everyone says, "Oh, this is the kind of sand you need," and it has nothing to do with what we used to have in the beautiful beach breaks we used to have 40 years ago.
Thank you. Public comments still open?
I live on the beach, I watch the sand, there are no rocks exposed right now, they are covered. Last week, we had breaks way out there. I have a three-foot drop from my backyard to the beach. I'm hoping that I'm going to have some luck with my sea oats that I just planted. This tilling thing, was the county going to let the citizens that live on the beach know about this? Were we going to get noticed on it? I mean, I received a letter from the Corps regarding the project, and my understanding is, is that the funding is not there yet. Okay, it's been, I think it's been appropriated, okay, but the funding is not there, but then there's something else about state money and local money, and if that is available, can somebody tell me how much that money is?
I'm not sure we know that funding. I know 2017 was when it was appropriated, and the state money was 16.
The mid-reach project and the tilling are two different things. So the tilling, the impact is so minimal to the citizens, I don't think the county was planning on notifying anyone, were you? I mean, it would be no different than street sweeping, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's the, it's a maintenance activity, and we, that's why we asked the contractor to have an escort, and we have business cards with the phone number and the website. I provided some of those to Alan Potter, so he would have some if residents asked, but it's for tilling, we've never done a broad public notice, because it's a very short-term maintenance activity.
Yeah, and then for the mid-reach project, the letter states that the money has been appropriated for fiscal year 17, and that if state or local funds were advanced, then the construction could start in 2016, but I don't know of any local or state funds, is that correct? That are being advanced?
We, not that are being advanced, and I don't recall the exact sentence in that letter, but the Corps of Engineers, if you advance, we don't have sufficient funds to advance the federal share of that project, so we're aggressively seeking federal funding. The county funds are provided through the tourist development, bed tax, and that funding is available, and we have a state grant request in currently to pay the state share, and we're working through the grant process in Tallahassee to pursue that. So we're aggressively pursuing funding, but I, to my knowledge, the federal money is not guaranteed yet in any year, but we believe we'll get there.
Yeah, it says it could be appropriated in a bill, the earliest that it could be appropriated is... The earliest that it could be appropriated is fiscal year 17.
Yeah, that's what.
So whether or not that's done or not is still.
Right, exactly. But the federal, the Army Corps of Engineers, has a work plan process where their leadership picks projects that are ready to go, and while we will continue to seek 2017 appropriations, we're also seeking work plan money that could happen as early as fiscal '15 or '16. I can't promise that, but we're not sitting back just waiting for 2017 at this point.
Thank you. Further public comment? More still open?
Hi, I'm Jason Hyder. I don't live in Satellite Beach, but I am a Surf Rider member, and I just planted almost 9,000 sea oats, so I'm wondering if the tilling is going to affect that.
No.
As far as the beach goes, I just need to say that I've been doing sea oats for three years, and I've been building dunes with just sea oats rather than trucking sand. So I encourage you guys to foster that kind of agricultural development versus the dumping. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Public comments still open? Hearing none, back to council. Council wishes?
One thing I would say this. I moved about the condition of the beach, and I guess everybody is going to have a different opinion, but I moved here in 1956, and I remember the beach, the Patrick Air Force Base, excuse me, being quite wide and all sand and no rocks. And there used to be a pier at Patrick, and from that pier south to just about Indie Atlantic was what we have on the beach here today. There was rock. And then it stopped and didn't pick up again until south of Sebastian Inlet. And so I just remembered the beach being wider, but there was rock in this area. Up in Patrick, there was not. It was more a sand beach and wide. It was where the cars stopped driving from, Cocoa Beach. But there's a million different ways to do it, but what's the council wishes here?
I would just like to say, keeping in mind, I think you made a very good point, is you know, weather has been a blessing lately. I agree that I think we should try to go for the most natural sand, washed sand, best sand that we can get. I would be discouraging to say, let's not say the only thing we'll take is shoals, only from the point that is, if next year we get hit by a hurricane and all of a sudden most of that beach goes away, obviously, we'll have plenty of citizens who live beachside who are going to look to us to say, "We need help, and you know, we're taxpayers, and we want something done about that also." So I think going with what you were saying, I think that's a good line to go to. Yes, we want to get the most natural, best sand that we can do without limiting ourselves to say that's the only thing we can. Again, like I said, weather's been great, but as you know, if catastrophe hits next year and all of a sudden, as you mentioned, one time we lose six inches, next time we lose 15 feet of it, you know what's going to happen from all of the citizens who are living on the beach. They're going to be looking at us, and if we said, "Well, sorry, we limited ourselves that we're not going to take anything but this sand. Sorry about your property going in there," there could be some blowback from that. So I think we need to find that nice, happy medium. If we have the luxury of getting the best sand possible, that's what we want and not limit ourselves that that's the only thing that we can get and keep everybody's concerns on the table.
Thank you.
So what you're looking for, Mr. Mayor, is for us to kind of have a consensus to move forward with the letter that Courtney would write, to have our preferences expressed but not written in stone, that we'll work with it. If that's what, do you need a motion?
No, I think it's.
All right, then that's what we want to do. Let's do it.
I agree with Steve's comments, but I think we should clarify in the letter that if we are resorting to quarried sand, that we would want it washed to meet whatever specifications we need to meet as far as clean sand goes.
Yeah, we can do that.
I agree.
Let's do it.
Okay. All right, and then the last item I have is, you know, Jason, come back up here. We asked Jason Hyder from Surf Rider Foundation to come to the council meeting so we can recognize him and Surf Rider's work for the 2,433 sea oats that were planted on Sunday, February 8th, at Pelican Beach in Gemini Park. How many? 2,433 sea oats. The city bought 2,033 using our seed stock program with aquatic plants, but Surf Rider Foundation purchased 400 of those from the county sea oat purchase program and then provided all of the volunteers for the planting. So without them, we wouldn't have had that completed. There's no way we have the manpower to do any of that, so we wanted to recognize them and thank them. You know, the Surf Rider Foundation is often thought of as an advocacy group, but actually, they're also implementers too, and they, you know, get out and get their hands dirty, and we really appreciate their efforts. They're a great partner with the city. And Carrie Stoms actually wrote, "I would like to acknowledge the assistance of the Surf Rider Foundation for their partnership in this project. They are a great organization with which to work." So I just want to thank you and appreciate it, and don't leave without me taking a picture of you.
They also work with us on the Ocean Reef Beach Festival, too. So Jason, thank you for that also.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Tell Mike thanks for all you guys' effort. Appreciate it.
And that's it. Hour-long report.
That was long. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Six, Presentation by the Fire Department on fundraiser for breast cancer awareness. Chief?
Sherry Palmer, I think this is going to come up real quick, and Dave Ryan, if you'd like to. Do you still have? So throughout the year, as everybody knows, the Fire Department with a spearhead effort from Eric Tippin specifically and other members of the organization, the Satellite Beach Reserve Firefighters Association, over a given year, we're always very active in cancer awareness and raising funds. And so what we'd like to do is, because we have chosen that for our organization that we wanted to support is we wanted to support Breast Friends as our personal organization in cancer awareness and stuff, and partially because, you know, Eric's wife, you know, is very active in the group, and it's just, it gave us an opportunity that is somebody local that we can touch. So throughout this last year, through T-shirts, the movie nights, and various other things, what we'd like to do with Sherry Palmer here with Breast Friends is we'd like to present to you a check for $1,100, and this is from our fundraising efforts for 2014. And again, it's the Reserve Firefighters, Eric Tippins, and the guys at the Fire Department, and you're just the various things that they've done, and this is just, for lack of a better word, the fruit of the endeavors that they've done. So I just want to say thank you very much, and thank you Eric very much, and Dave, thank you very much also.
Thank you very much for your help. Thank you. Move on to Agenda Seven, Discuss, Take Action on Scope of Services for Engineering, Services for Lory Lane Basement Improvements, Phase One.
Thank you, Mayor. This is actually a continuation of what you saw with the infrastructure presentation. However, the project has changed slightly. We have decided, or we're recommending, to omit the stormwater treatment component, basically the water quality component of this project, and only do a slip lining of the entire pipe. All right? Just going to make sure I'm right. And largely because we don't feel like we're getting the value with the cost of the project in terms of treatment, because the cost is so high, and the treatment that we're getting out of it is, in our opinion, just too low. So we're going to just slip line the entire project, and so we provided the engineering estimate for that.
Okay. Thank you. Question, Alan, how old is the piping?
I believe that neighborhood was built in the 1970s, so it predates the neighborhood there. Probably 1960s, late 60s, early 70s.
It's never been replaced. This is, you know, some of the original piping.
It's absolutely original because we couldn't replace it. It's in people's backyards, so there's no way to, there was no way to get to it to do any replacement of the pipe. There might have been a couple fixes here and there, but for the, by and large, there's been no real project to replace anything back then.
I remember back around 2000, we were talking about slip lining back then. So has the process changed now and become easier to do?
Actually, it's probably from, we looked at it in the late 90s. I remember a company coming in and actually sending a person into the pipe to look at the root and try to clean the roots out and kind of evaluate it to see what it would cost us. And at that time, I think it was over $1 million to slip line the whole, the entire length of the trunk line. Now, it's about half of that, and the technology is well-advanced, you know, past the stage it was in, you know, in the 90s. We did a slip line project when we did Cassia Phase Two between Ocean Spray and the Oceanside Church property there. We had looked at replacing the entire section of pipe, but then, you know, where it was and how difficult it was going to be to get through people's yards and things like that, slip lining became the only option, and it went quite well. It took a half, well, a day to do it, but now I don't think we'll ever have to replace that pipe as far as I can tell.
Thank you very much for the counsel.
Does this have anything to do with the Glenwood trunk line?
That's what it is, yeah, the Glenwood trunk, yes. The Lory Lane Basin is, it outfalls, it outfalls outside through the Lory Lane Chopping Plaza. That's why it's called the Lory Lane Basin, but it covers from A1A, basically, A1A to South Patrick Drive between Cinnamon and probably Park Avenue, I think, or Sherwood, I'm sorry, Sherwood.
So then this is what, in that infrastructure, that big infrastructure proposal, it's what the project that we're calling the Glenwood Project?
The Glenwood Project, yeah, the Lory Lane Basin Project, yeah, they're both the same. The only reason we just kept it the Lory Lane Basin Project because we had originally gone out for 319 for just half of it, for just half of the pipe, and it was going to cost us double of what it's going to cost us just to slip line the entire pipe. But we were going to provide treatment, we were going to do some other things as well. But now, you know, because of the amount of treatment we were going to get and the amount of credit, it didn't work out, the cost per pound, you know, dealing with cost to benefit ratios, it just wasn't there.
Thank you. Questions?
If you have questions as well, David King's here to answer any questions.
At this time, I'll open up for public comment on Agenda Item Seven. Floor is open.
Dale Abrams, resident of the CRA. Where is the funding coming from?
This is part of the infrastructure presentation that we provided to you and part of the community meetings that we're completing. We will be recommending to increase the utility tax from 6% to 10%, and then we're recommending to finance that, use that increase as a pledge for financing $2.5 million worth of infrastructure projects. That presentation is on our city website.
Public comments still open? Hearing none, bring it back to council. Any further comment? Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Montanaro.
What did he move? What is the source?
Recommended action, I would.
The recommended action.
Recommended action.
The motion by Vice Mayor Montanaro, directed by Councilman Osmer. Further discussion from council? Hearing none, Lenore?
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Councilman Dodd?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Catino?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you.
And Lenore, I can hear you well with that microphone turned toward you.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight, Discuss, Take Action on Ordinance Number 1100. Jim?
Ordinance Number 1100, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, designating its official seal pursuant to Section 165.043 Florida statutes prohibiting use of city seal without specific approval of city council, providing penalties for violation, providing severability, repealing inconsistent ordinances, providing effective date. It's the first reading of ordinance Number 1100.
Okay, thank you. I know Section Three, we have proposed, changed.
Yeah. Right now, it says is provided in the Florida statutes, no person shall be authorized. I want that to read, no person, organization, or other entity shall be authorized.
Person is defined by statute more broadly than that.
More broadly than what?
Than what you just said. There's a definition for person that the statute uses in Section or Chapter One of the statutes. I don't remember exactly what it says, but it goes through a laundry list of what a person is.
And it covers all of them?
It covers more than what you just said.
Okay.
All right.
All right, then leave it alone on that.
What I'll do is I'll send you a copy of what the statute says.
And for the second reading, if you need to change it.
Further comment? Okay, at this time, open up for public hearing on Agenda Item Eight.
Jerry Hudson, resident. What exactly are we requesting the seal from?
Misused by individuals or organizations.
For what purpose?
Whatever their purpose might be. It's the, we want it to be the seal of the City of Satellite Beach, and we don't want it misused in any way, or people think where it's being used is the official document of the city.
And you guys are all for the First Amendment action? Thank you.
Thank you.
Dale Abrams, resident of the CRA. We just had something called for locals only, and the City of Satellite Beach's seal was on flyers and posters and stuff. When we do something like that, do they have to get permission from the city council to utilize that seal?
Yes.
And is that? Let me explain, locals only, in partnership with our rec department, put that surf contest on, and it was with a lot of help from the staff, the people at Long Doggers, along with the Surf Riders Foundation and the city participated in that. The Fire Department, Public Works, so yes, it was part of the city's recreation event.
Okay, so would that be something that would be discussed at a council meeting regarding doing something like that? In other words, if you were going to have an event that is in a partnership either with the rec department or another department of the city, would that be discussed in front of council?
That might, you know, I can't answer that all the time. It might not be. The city manager and our recreation director might judge that as being part of the recreation program, and you've got to remember, by the city charter, the city manager runs the city and the day-to-day operations, and those department heads fall under her. We would give direction on items to run the city, but the city's run day-to-day by the city manager.
Okay, so basically, then we don't really need to know about the Ocean Reef Festival next year, this year, because the city manager's running that, and we don't have to have a discussion in front of council, which we've done in the past.
I don't see where the city manager has anything to do with really the Ocean Reef Festival, other than the.
It's utilizing the property of the city.
It is, and they come to the Recreation Department and arrange that through our Recreation Department and our city manager on that type of events. That's not something we, as a council, vote on every single recreation activity that goes on through our Recreation Department. There's 1,000 people a week going through there. The Recreation Department is run by Carrie Stoms and oversee by our city manager, and if the city manager and Carrie feel that that's an appropriate event for the city, they give it its blessing.
But we never real, okay.
But it's nothing that we.
Yeah, I agree, and you know, the other question is, is there any cost to the city? Because I can remember in the past when there was discussion about having events that, you know, there was some. you know, there was some cost to the city because you may need city personnel to do certain things for these events, okay? I think I get what you're saying, is that any events that occur in the city are now going through the rec department or the city manager.
They have all the time.
There's other.
I mean, there's events that go on in the city, there's baseball games that go on.
Well, I'm talking about, I'm not talking about baseball games.
Okay, but I'm saying, what I'm saying to you is there are events that are going on in the city all the time. They go through our rec department first if they want to use our facilities.
Right.
And then, if it's something out of the ordinary and our rec department needs to see our city manager, then it goes to there.
Yeah, because I know when we did the farmer's market, we all, it was brought forward to all of you, and you guys made a decision on it.
All I did was a conceptual there. It was handled by the rec department and our city manager.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Jason Heider. I also do the Ocean Reef Beach Festival, so I just wanted to tell you that the city receives sponsorship for the assistance. They are sponsors, but they don't donate any money. And the Ocean Reef Beach Festival Committee is in no way related to the City of Satellite Beach.
Mark Abraham, resident of Satellite Beach. Most logos in the private sector are required to protect their imageries with sign marks, trademarks. Is there any requirement like that? And would you explain the difference of what the, what you state here is pursuant to the Florida statutes? I take it there's a, if you could juxtapose the two, this statute versus the requirement to trademark or sign mark something?
Basically, well, actually, there's two issues regarding the copyright or its trademark or however you want to phrase it. One is that that statute normally protects a mark that is used in the provision of goods or services or materials, and there's no provision for any governmental entity to quote-unquote trademark their seal or logo. There is a prohibition in the statute, in the copyright statute, that a person cannot, in essence, expropriate the logo or seal of a governmental entity and try and register that as part of their mark. The sole basis to protect the seal is this particular statute, and that's the purpose for doing this. This is the only, this is the only statute that quote-unquote affords a protection to counties and municipalities to protect their seal.
Thank you. Public comments still open?
Steve Headley, no longer a resident, but I have a feeling this is applying to me. First thing, Mr. Mayor, you said that, that the approval of the seal, use of the seal would be allowed or ordained, whatever you want to say, made by the city manager. Did I mishear that?
Well, what I said was in reference, oh, I'm going to tell you, I said it was in reference to being on the poster for the surfing, local surfing event, because the city and rec department did participate in it. You know, something like that, the city manager could authorize that to be put on there.
Okay, that seems to be contrary to Section 3 of the ordinance, that specifically says without the express approval of the city council of the City of Satellite Beach.
Well, the ordinance hasn't been passed yet.
I'm just letting you know. Okay, I'm not arguing.
I'm just saying, that's where we're at at this time.
Okay. Secondly, and probably more importantly, this ordinance is overly broad. It is contrary to the spirit and the letter of the First Amendment of the federal constitution, and also the letter and spirit of the Florida constitution. It is way overly broad.
Okay, thank you very much. Public comment is still open. This time, bring it back. Counsel comments? Any counsel comments on this?
I'd just like to say, looking at this, I think the intent of what we were going for is, obviously, if the city or city staff is making the decision on something that's happening within city business, then they, city staff can make the opportunity to say, yes, we can use the seal. If it's something outside of the city, city property, a city document or something like that, then that would require the council to make that decision. I think that's kind of what we were intending. The other part of that is, I know that, working out at Kennedy Space Center, and so, no one is allowed to use what we call the NASA, they call it the NASA Meatball. You are not authorized to use that without the express written permission from someone in NASA to say you can use that. So it even tells contractors, who are a NASA contractor, you cannot use that on your letterhead without written permission. So that is kind of common in government, that you, that I've seen that used that way. So and, and at the same time, I know we, we talked about, we wanted to do the right thing by protecting copyrighted items and so on, so I think we should just do that in the spirit all the way around.
I think the statute basically says, manufacture, use, display, or other employment of any facsimile or reproduction of the county or municipal seal except by county or municipal officials or employees in the performance of their official duties without the express approval of the governing body is a second-degree misdemeanor. So the city attorney can go ahead and amend the language to match the statute, and that way, that issue won't be an issue for second reading.
Thank you. Do you want to make that correction?
Yeah, I mean, basically, all you would add is, after no person in the first line, toward the end of the first line, just say other than city officials or city employees shall be authorized, and then it just goes on further. You just add that one.
Thank you. Any further? Okay, do I have a motion?
Don't move.
I have a motion by counsel.
As amended.
As amended, so moved.
On first reading.
On first reading.
I'm getting there. I had a motion by Councilman Breimer, seconded by Vice Mayor Montanaro to approve ordinance number 1100 on first reading as amended. Any further discussion? Here are none. Lenore?
Councilman Goddard?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Catino?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 9, discuss, take action on request for proposal for municipal community development software.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the approval of, we're requesting the approval of the committee's results in selecting CitizenServe for providing the municipal community development software. As you recall, for the fiscal year 1415 Capital Assets Fund budget, you budgeted $25,000 for the replacement of building and zoning software that include, that would include business tax receipt, permits, and then also coordinate the building and zoning permitting for projects through the fire department and building and zoning. The software upgrades would allow for paperless inspections, greater integration and retrieval of data, GIS mapping, and numerous other features. And this would apply to the functions of building permitting, fire permitting, planning, inspections, and business tax receipts. Currently, our existing software is over 15 years old. Obviously, that's, it's so old now that they don't support it anymore, so we don't have any support. So that usually is a clue to start the replacement process. The RFP was advertised in local media on December 8th and closed on January 16th. The city received two proposals. The committee was established to rank and score the proposals, and that consisted of Assistant City Manager Andy Stewart, City Clerk Lenore Alexa, Building Official John Stone, and Fire Commander David Abenathy, and Building and Zoning Administrative Coordinator Tanya Minor. The committee heard presentations from both companies and then scored accordingly. The highest score was Citizen Serve, which received a score of 26.40, and therefore, staff is recommending your approval of their selection so we can move forward with contract negotiations.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Goddard, seconded by Councilman Osmer. This time, further discussion from counsel? Here are none. Open up for public comment on Agenda Item 9.
Dale Abrams, CRA resident. Is there any reason why we couldn't see the other bid? Is that possible to see the other company? You picked the company from Arizona, right? There was somebody from Boston?
That's, well, their rating is even
No, I'm talking about their, actually, their proposal. There was only one proposal in the packet.
We only provided in the packet one of the sheets of the proposal. The proposals were quite large, so we didn't include the two proposals. But you can come and request, and we'll be happy to provide you a copy.
Of, not the whole proposal, but what the other company put together, like what you have chosen, correct?
Yeah, we can provide that to you.
And the other question is, this is going to have GIS capability? The same type of GIS that you're looking at doing with the Resilient Community Program?
Well, GIS is all the same, because it's geographic information system, but the purpose would be completely different for the use of that.
But it's the same product. So you could, could you take the GIS system that we're currently purchasing for the building department and utilize that for this project that you're looking at for the Resilient Community?
No. This is not a GIS system. It has a GIS component that will assist the building inspectors while they're out in the field, but it's not a full GIS system. The city's not big enough to have that. We don't, we don't need that here.
Okay, so it's not a full GIS system?
Thank you. Public comment is still open. Here are none. Bring it back to counsel. Courtney, with this software, people could come in, and if for some reason, public, which was not Public Works, but building department, excuse me, was at lunch, someone could still get a permit, a business license, and so forth. From where are we going to cross-train people?
Well, if, if the permit was ready, because there's only two people in the city that can issue them, but the, so if there is a permit ready, then they could, you know, probably any administrative assistant could pull it up and provide it to the person.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Here are none. Lenore?
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Goddard?
Yes.
Mayor Catino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 10, Quarterly Budget Report. Andy?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to introduce a hire that we made about three months ago, six months ago, I'm sorry, wow, that we made when Nan left for the City of Cape Canaveral. We brought on Jennifer Howland. She came to us from the city of Melbourne Beach. She's met the majority of everybody here on the council, but for the general audience, that's who's here. She's kind of taken over some of the financial aspects, and we hired her as comptroller. We were able to hire her within the constraints of our budget. So we're glad to have her on board. She comes with a background in accounting, and at least has several degrees in accounting. So we're getting our team together here, and I think you'll, you'll see that as we move forward. I'll let, we're here tonight to go over just the quarterly report, the first quarter. As you guys know, the first quarter is not a lot of information at this time, you know, really to really predict where we're going to be heading. Mid-year budget report, third quarter report, and then, of course, the year-end, we'll tell you where we finished the year at. So what we did was, we made a really short, brief presentation. I'll let Jennifer bear with the first half of the presentation, and then I'll tell you where we ended up the 1314 year, because that's probably, at this point, what you all like to know. We did a year-end budget amendment, but after we've gotten all the invoices in for last year, we'll be able to tell you sort of where we finished up the 1314 fiscal year, and then, of course, that'll be audited in March. So I'll let Jennifer kind of give you an update on where we're at for the first quarter, and then we'll keep it pretty short and brief for this first quarter presentation. Let me go back.
Well, you can already see in your page that these numbers are in there, but the total general fund revenues collected are at 55%. It's approximately $5,256,008. And the expenditures are at 27%. Community Services Fund, Fund 101, revenues are at 17%, expenditures at 8%. Stormwater Utility Fund is Fund 125, revenues are at 82%, most of the ed alarm and expenditures are at 45%. Law Enforcement Trust Fund is Bennoactivity. Community Redevelopment Trust Fund, Fund 140, revenues are at 57%, and expenditures at 22. Revenues are a little bit high because of the transfer from general fund for the interlocal agreements and such. Capital Assets Fund, 150, revenues 22, expenditures 9%. So as Andy already stated, the mid-year report is going to provide a better outlook on this, but just from these numbers, we're pretty much on target, and there is no necessary budget amendments needed. At this time, we're on target for the year.
So it's, you know, as I said, the first quarter is three months into this. Some things that we won't, you know, for the first quarter, we don't receive until the fourth month, and a large revenue may come in, or an expense may be there. So it's really hard to get a good indication on where you're at. But for this year, last year, we were sitting here in the first quarter, and we knew we had an issue in the stormwater fund. So we addressed that. You'll, you know, you'll see that throughout this year. But this year, we think we've adopted a good enough budget to where we don't have to come back and say there's any surprises. You know, we've been here, Courtney's been here a year and a half, I've been here a year. So we think we've got everything under control, so we can, you know, chug forward and stay within our budget and have no major surprises, which will be good for our city. What I'll do now is just kind of give you an update on where we ended the year September 30th of 2014. So we're going to have our audit, as I said, in March to audit last fiscal year, but this kind of gives us an indication on where we're at today as far as our fund balance and the way that our general fund looks. The 1314 year, just a basic overview here, the revenues were $9,375,159, and the expenditures for the year in the general fund were $9,22,000. So you can see that we brought in more revenues than we expended, and so we have an excess of approximately $352,000. That number basically is a surplus for the city. The city was under budget by $352,000. $200,000 of that is the transfer that we bring in from the CRA to the general fund to help with reserves. So in actuality, the city was $152,000 under budget. So the departments held the line. We addressed the stormwater issue. We were able to cut back on our expenses any way that we could within our departments. We froze some opposition. So we were able to, the departments were able to come under budget. So that's always a good thing moving forward. It's a little bit small here, but I'll basically show you. This was in our budget for 1314. This is the estimated amount that we've been brought to you at the beginning of 2013 in our budget and said, hey, at the end of the year, this will be our fund balance. As we all know, that was an issue two or three years ago. So what you're looking at here is the estimated 1314, and this is where we're at the end of the year. Now that we're six months into the new year, this is sort of where we ended up, the actual numbers. Of course, they still need to be audited, but everything's The actual numbers, of course, they still need to be audited, but everything's in the accounts, there shouldn't be any issues. So if you look at the, the bottom line numbers, $527,000 was our stabilization reserve, what we predicted. We actually finished out with six, being able to put $649,000 in that stabilization reserve. And then the unassigned fund balance, which is money that can be used for anything, to cover a deficit or what have you, we budgeted $275,000, and we were able to put $331,000, $81,000 more than we predicted in our budget. So that is a good thing. Our reserves are building at a rapid pace. The, the one slide I'll show you, maybe mid-year will be where we're at, where we're going to be at as far as our plan. I think we're several years ahead of our plan as far as building to the reserves, to the FGFOA standards, so. But the total unrestricted reserves will be 802,000, and in 1314, the actual was 981,000. So after this budget year that we're in, we'll be able to increase that some more, and, but I think we're, we're making great strides in, in bringing back the city to a, a level of good financial health. Looking ahead, as the city staff has scheduled, the fiscal year 1314 audit will be conducted March 23rd. We have begun creating the 1516 budget, and we are also looking to implement a two-year budget this next, this, this next budget year. Usually we start budgeting in July, we're going to start early. We're, we're caught up in our department, and so we're looking to plan ahead to get a good feel of where we're going to be. We're looking to implement a two-year budget, just simply because it's a good planning tool for the city. You can, you can look out two years instead of, hey, what's going to happen next? We can kind of predict a little bit in the future. And some of, some of the other cities do that as well. And then the city council continues to practice best budgeting practices that will continue to improve the financial condition of the city. We've also submitted for the, the budget award, which is a certain criteria that you have to meet from the Government Financial Officers Association. I think we'll have, whether we receive the award for the second year, we'll have those results in March, but we've been following those guidelines when it comes to budgeting and preparing a budget. So I think all those things combined has, has helped the city get back into a positive financial, you know, outlook, so along with our quarterly budget reports, as I said, the first quarter's brief, you know, there's not a lot to it, but I think just by bringing that to you four times a year, doing it, doing a year-end budget amendment the correct way, I think we're staying on top of what we need to stay on. Everybody's catching little mistakes here and there, so I think moving forward, we're in a good, a good financial situation.
Andy, thank you very much, your staff for all the hard work. Questions from council?
Good job.
At this time, his agenda item, I'll open up for public comments on Agenda Item 10.
Dale Abrams, resident of the CRA. Monday, I downloaded the packet, and I had all these financials that I spent some time on, and then I was informed this morning that it's changed. So I downloaded everything with the changes. That wasn't there. Now, may I make a suggestion? I spent some time at a county workshop last week regarding stormwater, and they put together the PowerPoint presentation later on in the meeting. It wasn't a handout when you got into the meeting, and that was very helpful to have as the Public Works Director was going through his PowerPoint presentation. So this was not on the website this morning when I got on. I pulled off other stuff, and, you know, is there a reason why we can't have a hard copy of the PowerPoint presentation? It's very difficult to see some of those things up there. I don't mind the PowerPoint presentation, but I would either like to have a hard copy or it on the internet so I can look at it on my iPad.
Thank you. We will take that into consideration. Thank you very much.
And I also thought the city was in good financial shape anyway. So if we are, then why are we borrowing $2.5 million?
Thank you.
I, well, I just wanted to comment real quick. We, we will be glad to print out copies of the presentation. A lot of times we do that. I apologize for not having that out tonight, but we don't put them on the internet until we provide the presentation. A lot of times, it's practical reasons, because a lot of times we're putting together these presentations, you know, the day before the meeting or the day of the meeting. And secondly, sometimes the presentations without hearing the presentation can confuse people. So we like to have that YouTube video and the presentation put on the web at the same time. We also, addressing the $2.5 million remark, we have money in reserves, which we're supposed to always have money in reserves. We don't have $2.5 million to pull out of reserves, obviously because we don't have $2.5 million in reserves. So we are, that's why we're increasing the utility tax and financing those improvements.
Mark Abraham again. I began to participate in meetings here in town starting in November. I attended the city council meeting back then, and I remember that was the one in which you voted to give $34,000 in bonuses to employees, part-time and full-time. The statements that were made then is that everything was fine financially. We were just sitting real pretty. Then in the January meeting, you then disclosed material information, as I would call it, that suddenly we're behind $2.5 million. Now, I used to be a financial advisor. If one of my clients would call me up in December and say, how do I stand? Where do I stand? I really like to buy some gifts. I say, oh, no problem at all, you got $34,000, go spend it. And then tell them in January, less than 60 days later, that they now have to commit to a $2.5 million loan commitment, I would feel duped. And I remember, Mr. Mayor, you reached out, one of the gentlemen who came up and addressed you, you, you kind of fired back at them, and you, you said, you know, well, will you tell me the answer? Well, the answer is this, and it's, it's in what you have actually said and other people have agreed with. I'm not sure exactly the years, because you originally said that you used to budget $100,000 every year for road resurfacing projects, and that it was about 2006 when that stopped. That was nine years ago. Then the last meeting, you said, well, maybe it was 2004, maybe it's 2006. But I don't know about you, but if you sit on a problem and shovel under the rug a deficiency, there ought to be some way to be able to address that. And there was kind of a play on words that was done in January where suddenly, oh, well, these are capital improvements. You know, it really didn't have anything to do with what was back then. Well, let me tell you something. When you got a debt, you got a debt, and when you've been shoveling it under the rug for nine years, that's a problem, and that's known as an unfunded liability. And I believe that unfunded liabilities should be addressed and recognized on the budget so that people know what's there, so that we're not caught off-guard as we were between your November meeting and your January meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. As for being not unfunded, it's absolutely funded. That's why the extra 4% on the utility tax is for, so it can be funded. As for the roads from 2004, was the last time we paved, and if it was done on an every four-year basis, it hit in 2008 when we had a downturn in the economy. This infrastructure project goes way beyond road resurfacing. That's just a tiny part of it. We have total road rebuilds, we have stormwater that the laws have changed greatly since the early part of the city. With the infrastructure in the city and some piping being from day one, we have needed to do these projects in the past, and it was this council who asked the staff of the city to tell us the true capital improvement plans that we need to put in place to do, and that's what we're doing, so we don't fall $2.5 million behind. And again, we've stated here many times that the 2.5 is not putting us ahead of the game. We're making up for things that haven't been repaired in years, and we're repairing them now, and it's definitely funded because we wouldn't have anything that wasn't funded. Thank you.
I was just, Mayor, I was just going to add that we do include these items in the budgets called the Capital Improvement Plan, and that's at the back of the budget, and it has all of the improvements that are needed. In this case, we switched out Roosevelt for Wilson because it was a greater need, and so we do, we've all, we, we haven't made it a secret that we've had infrastructure problems. There's plenty here for anybody to see. And secondly, there's a big difference between a capital improvement and an operating budget. In terms of operating, we are doing well. Our staff stays under their expenses. We have been able to build the reserves in the last two years from zero to $1.2 million. So in that case, we are doing well. In terms of fixing our infrastructure, we have always said there was a need, and the need is clearly stated in the budget.
Mr. Abrams? Abraham, I'm sorry. I have observed you long enough now to know that no matter what this city does, you will think it's wrong, and if that's your game, that's fine. However, in a few days, there's going to be a special edition Beachcaster coming out that's going to explain the whole infrastructure issue and the $2.5 million project cost, and I would strongly urge you to read it with an open mind. You might find it enlightening.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Sir, you don't have, you don't have the floor. I'm sorry, you don't have.
I don't, I, I shouldn't have to take.
You don't have the floor. Sir, I'm going to tell you, stop. I'm telling you right now, you do not have the floor. I ask you, please do not speak. Thank you very much. Okay, public comment is still open.
I shouldn't have to take.
Sir, excuse me. Thank you.
Dave Fine, I'm a city resident. Mr. Chairman, I, I find it absolutely abhorrible, absolutely abhorrible that somebody, the citizens of Satellite Beach stands up here and complains about a small amount of money that we gave our employees that hadn't had pay raise yet, I don't know how long, and we give them a small amount, and we're trying our best to keep the quality of services that we have. I find it absolutely abhorrible, disgusting, and outrageous. That being said, that being said, Mr. Chairman, it appears that people do not know how to look at a budget, and I'm not used to dealing with budgets that much as with the income statements. I can look at a budget, I can tell the difference between capital expenditures and, and anything else that's involved. And we have had virtually, virtually, no monies coming in for several years during the downturn in the economy, and we're trying to catch up, and as far as I'm concerned, city manager, city staff, that has made many sacrifices, and this city council is doing a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment is still open on Agenda Item 10.
Dale Abrams, CRA resident. I would like to talk to the citizens of this community to pay attention to what's going on, because not only are taxes and fees going up in your own community, you have to look to Brevard County also. And, you know, we have sales tax, we have gas tax, we're going to have utility taxes, there could be discussions about water tax. Tax, tax, tax. I mean, maybe you people like taxes, okay? If that's the case, then, hey, fine, but there are a lot of people that are, you know, concerned about all these taxes that are being thrown at them at this particular time, and the economy isn't doing as well as some people would like to believe, okay? So, you know, it's, people do get upset, and I think one of the ways to get the attention of all the citizens in the city of Satellite Beach is to start raising taxes, okay? Maybe then they will start paying a little more attention via YouTube to what is going on here.
Thank you very, very much. You know, I'm going to answer that. I, I don't like paying taxes any more than the, anybody else does, but when I look at the infrastructure of our city, and not just our city, I mean, it's been in the paper for the last few weeks, and it's all cities, the county roads, Palm Bay roads, we have an obligation to make the town as safe as we possibly can and to make sure our infrastructure is stable. And so, yes, there are times when we need to raise revenue to cover those. We do live in this city, we use the roads, we use the infrastructure, and I don't like the taxes, but like I've always said to people, if there's another way to improve our infrastructure other than what we're doing, that's why we're doing these town meetings, so people can come out and let us know what are the other ideas. And, yes, we're doing very well in our general fund, but the infrastructure in this city has never really paid for itself over years. We've always been struggling to keep up, and I think you also have to realize that 20 years ago, few years ago, the city was still very new in some of the places, but now, a great deal of the infrastructure in this city is quite old, and the longer we wait, the more this is going to cost us. It's not a pretty picture when we give our talk at the town hall meetings, we tell exactly the way it is. Yes, it's 2.5. Do you think we're getting ahead with 2.5? We're not, but we have to get caught up to some point where it's going to cost us considerably more in the future, especially the stormwater. 25 years ago, we didn't have these restrictions on stormwater on us. We do now, and I don't think this is a project that we can tell the state, we're going to pick and choose which ones we want to do. So, anyway, public comments still open? Hearing none, back to council. Council comments?
Do we need to accept this report?
We just, it was just information. Staff, thank you very, very much. We appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 11, proposed agenda items for our March 4th meeting. Please look at them. If there's additional ones that need to be added or you would like to have added, please see Courtney or myself.
Yeah, I, we need the second reading on ordinance 1100.
Yeah, we caught that this morning.
And we need the first reading on the handbook ordinance.
Okay.
Okay, any additional ones? Please feel free to see Courtney. Moving on to Agenda Item 12, adoption of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the county work, or the council workshop meeting of January 14th as submitted, and the council meeting of January 21st as submitted.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Montanaro. Do I have a second?
I didn't say February 4th, but there's also the February 4th workshop meeting as submitted.
Motion by Vice Mayor Montanaro, second by Councilman Breimer. Further discussion? Hearing none, Lenore?
Councilwoman Gott?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cattino?
Yes. Motion passes. To the staff, thank you very much for your work on the presentations and so forth. Courtney, thank you. Any further business before council? Hearing none, meeting's adjourned.